All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the workshop meeting at City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, on October 11th at the 6:30 hour. Karen, would you please let him know what the proceedings will be?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council Hybrid Workshop Meeting of Mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, October 11th, 2021 at 6:30 p.m. In the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, Mayor Nicholas J. Helmer presiding. This meeting will be streamed live on the following cable channels: Comcast and Wow, Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99, and simulcast on Zoom. It will be recorded and televised at a later date on Comcast and Wow, Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse at Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will have a five-minute limit for the speaking time, during which meeting it is anticipated there will be discussion and consideration of, and if so determined, action upon the matters contained in the following.
It's not sounding good. Thank you. Everyone heard? Please go unmute at this point. We will proceed with a couple of items. One will be a call to order, so that we have a roll call, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
They can't hear.
All right, can you hear me now? Where's Mr. Tibbetts?
You hear, you hear. No, I didn't. Okay, well, I didn't intend to open Chrome. I'm trying to change it, okay.
I believe everyone on Zoom can hear you.
Button pushed correctly. I'm hearing.
It's nice to be heard, but I need everybody to be heard, to hear me, really. One, two, tell me when, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Pardon?
We do hear you, Mayor.
All right, if everybody's in line, let me repeat what I just said. That is, in a moment, we'll have a call to order, serve in a quorum. After that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like Alderman Wendy Morgan to go ahead and lead us at that point. So first of all, let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Quinn, Ward 2. Alderman Morgan Adams, Ward 3.
Here.
Alderman Dash, Ward 4.
Here.
Alderman Dolick and Alderman Cameron are out by previous notice.
And we have the City Treasurer.
I'm here.
We have the City Clerk, you are here, Joanna. Obviously, I see your picture. And so we do have a quorum with people out. We have two of the people out, but we still have a quorum, because all we need... All we need is three. Can we get that screech out? All right, let's go with the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Alderman Morgan. Wendy, you're giving the speech, right?
Yeah.
You're giving the invocation. All right, we heard parts, but most of it, and I know what you said. So let's move on with Joe, approval of minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Item 3 is, as the mayor mentioned, approval of minutes from the September 27th regular city council meeting minutes and the September 13th executive session regular city council workshop minutes. However, the September 13th minutes are not for public distribution as executive session minutes.
Alderman Morgan Adams here. I have substantial problems with the executive session minutes, so I'm asking that we table that one, and I will provide my changes to both Karen Schiltice and to Joanna regarding my changes, because I have some problems, I have a lot of problems with these minutes.
The executive minutes should not be published.
Well, I know they're not published, so I can't discuss the, I can't discuss the changes at the, at this council meeting. So I'll provide my changes. I'm asking to table those minutes, table the issue of approval for those.
Turn that up for table.
They're up for approvals tonight, yes, they are. I'm asking to table.
Where are they? You're talking about item B then, right?
It's item B, correct.
All right, good. So we have a motion to table item B, a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
A second.
We have a move by Kathleen Quinn, and a second by Wendy Morgan Adams. Any further discussion? If there is not, please have a roll call.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Motion passes 3-0. Joe?
We still have consideration of the September 27th regular city council meeting minutes.
A motion to approve the September 27, 21 regular city council meeting minutes?
I can't.
We have a motion, we have a second regarding the September meeting. Let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Moving on to, Joe, moving on to appointments and confirmations and proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no presentations or appointments, proclamations, confirmations. Which brings us to item 6, public comment on agenda matters. Has anyone registered?
No, I did not get any registration. Thank you, Joe.
Very good. Any, anybody from the public? No? Okay.
Let's, Joe, 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 let's finish reading that.
So I'm moving on to number nine?
I'm reading this, there's no one there. Let's go on with item 7, please.
Oh, sorry.
Let's proceed with item 7, staff elected officials and commissioner reports. Instead of jumping back to the staff comments, let's start with the elected officials, including their comments, so they don't have to back track later. So Joanna, if you would take the list of people that we have there and follow them one by one for their commission reports and any comments they have to make.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Alderman Quinn?
I want to thank Beau Wade, East Delackey, Peter Topanegro, and Mark Roscoe. We had a situation in Ward 2 with the street signs, and they were gracious enough to make time to come out in Ward and go through some potentially traffic patterns, so that before these signs get put up, you make some corrections. So I really appreciate them taking the time and coming out and, you know, walking this area and looking for some issues. And then also, thank you to Peter and Beau. We had a resident who had, you know, a fraudulent claim on unemployment, and they got us in contact with some government officials that can help, because that's been an ongoing problem for a lot of people, and so I really thank them for, you know, helping us help the residents, you know, be safe. So guys, it's it.
Thank you. Alderman Morgan Adams?
I was happy to have attended the ribbon cutting for the new customs facility at the Chicago Executive Airport. And I, Mayor Helmer made a great speech regarding the benefits of the new customs facility and how it enhances our city airport for international travel. I was very happy to have attended, and I think it was a, it's a great, it's going to be a great benefit for our city.
Thank you. Alderman Dash? No report. Uh, City Treasurer Rich Tibbetts?
No report.
Okay.
And you, Joanna?
No report, thank you, Mayor.
All right. One thing I'd like to point out is the Customs Building, as I said, so, for so many years, and it was erroneous, and that is that we had a full-service airport. That wasn't true. What we had was a mostly full-service airport, and now with customs, federal government being involved, we truly are a full-service reliever airport for the State of Illinois and for the best part of the country. The great thing is that if we were not in business, if we were not full-service, O'Hare would have a huge problem, and that's over with. And I'm really pleased to say that Prospect Heights and Wheeling, who own the airport, have done a fantastic job. And as most of you know, I sat on the board myself at the airport 14 years, and gosh, I can't, can't say that something could have done better than what has happened to the airport, and now the full service is in truly in effect. But thank you.
Yes, accolades to all who made it happen.
Yeah, took a while. But thank you for all that, and Joanna, let's go on to other people that are present, and they too could say what they would like to say, one by one, and take it off your ballot order here and do that. Okay? Go ahead.
Assistant Finance Director Tenham?
Thank you, Joanna. Just a little bit, we had auditors on site today to wrap up the audit. We're expecting a draft shortly on that, and we also tentatively set up a presentation of the audit for one of the November workshops. So that's all we have from the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Joe Wade?
Just want to advise the mayor and council that the city received, oh, I think it was Friday, the notice of participation in the national opioid settlement, and this was from the state attorney general. The city attorney O'Driscoll has filed on behalf of the city for participation. Without filing, we are not eligible for any distribution. There's much work to be done, but at least we're filed for that. And certainly, the City of Prospect Heights, as I would venture, most cities have been impacted by that. The council may not be aware, but the Prospect Heights Police Department, I believe, was one of, was the first in the northwest suburban area to start carrying the Narcan. Basically, that's a kind of a reversal for, for overdoses, and it's been used successfully many times. There's also been incidents we've been involved in, too, without successful outcomes. But like, like much of America, we've been impacted by it, so we are going to file. We have filed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Police Chief Delackey?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a few things. Our Citizen Police Academy started last Monday, and it's going to continue for the next seven Mondays. We have 11 students in the class, and hopefully we get some volunteers out of that. Also tomorrow and next Tuesday, our whole department will be training in our Rapid Deployment Annual Training. We're going to use a portion of the all-state facility over on Sanders that they're not using, so our officers go in there and train over there for this week and next week. And then on Saturday, October 23rd, the Park District and the city's having their Spook Fest, and we'll have officers out there with our squad cars and handing out candy. It's from 3:00 to 7:00 over at the Morabas Center, so our guys will be out there participating in that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Chief, a quick question. When will you bring back the peer jury? I've had questions all summer long, and I said probably when school starts. Well, school has started, so what's the plan there?
Well, the peer jury, it's whenever we have any juveniles that have committed some minor crimes, so we do refer to peer jury. So we, it hasn't had any cases, but we will have them once we have some juvenile offenders, minor offenders, we will bring them in front of the peer jury. So it just depends on our caseload if we do. If we have no cases, we don't have the jury then.
But the people that will serve are aware of the posture we're taking?
Pardon me, I didn't hear you, Mayor.
I said, do the people that have tentatively served on, are they happening?
You're cutting out a, something about the ones that serve on there? Is that what you're saying, something about the?
Yes, do the people, does your roster exist as to who is on the peer jury and will be called upon when you have cases?
Yes. Officer Farina handles our peer jury, and he does have our list of the jurors that will be called if we do have cases.
All right, thank you. Anyone else left? Joanna?
Yes. Director of Building and Development Peterson?
Thank you very much. My report tonight is a reminder to all our residents that it's the fall of the year. This is the time to get our, our fall maintenance, sealing of windows, cracking, trying to keep pests and rodents from entering our house. If you have gutters that are filling up with leaves, that can be a source of ice damming and blockage. Please take care, those should be handled by professionals if you're not skilled or capable of doing that. Additionally, we will be coming up on the time change, which is going to be a little later this year, and that's a good time to change the batteries in our smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. So if you have any questions, the building department is available. Please contact us here at City Hall, and we will assist as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Works Director Mark Roscoe?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Short report tonight. We've been talking about for the last few weeks about how we're doing sewer repairs and some stormwater work. That's all starts this week. Our contractor, Gonziano, will be out doing these spot repairs that have been picked up by our engineering group and the camera work that we've done over the last few years. And the stormwater replacement work along Kellworth Avenue between Shaw and Beck and Elm is going to get staged and hopefully get started this week or next. So we'll see some activity going on. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Schiltice?
Thank you. No report.
Attorney O'Driscoll, if he's available?
Thank you. No report.
Is Attorney Hess there?
Yes, I'm here.
He has no report.
Attorney Hess has no report, thank you.
Okay. We have digital communications, signatures, all of them.
Joanna, there's no one left on my list?
We have digital communications, all of them on my list.
I don't understand why we have those. We've been in business too long. Secondly, Joe, we have the consent agenda. Let's take one at a time and call for a vote on each item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, these are items that are routine in nature, the, listed on the agenda, items A through C. If there are no corrections or requests to remove from the consent agenda, we can consider it in an omnibus motion.
I would be in favor of...
Well, Joe, I think we're spending money... Joe, we're spending money, take it through by one by one, I believe we have to vote, on the, on the spending of money like in item B, for example.
We'll do as you wish, Mr. Mayor. Item A is, certainly, it's what's listed on the agenda, purchase of a snow machine within budget, $41,000. Motion to approve?
Yes, so moved. Morgan Adams.
So we're spending $42,445.48, is that correct?
No, sir, this is the snow machine, and we have a, we have a motion and a second. I think we'll do a roll call.
How much is this?
$41,000.
Well, did we mention how much the snow machine costs?
$41,000.
Got it, thank you. Good. All right, go ahead and call for your roll call.
Aye. If you called Alderman Dash, it's an aye. Thank you. We heard you. Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
All right, we need three approvals. Who's left?
That's it.
They all sit up.
That's 3-0, unanimous.
Got it. Thank you for the help, Alderman Dash. 3-0 is the vote. Go ahead, Joe.
Item B is a resolution authorizing award of a contract for asphalt patching in several areas of the city. It is through the municipal partnering initiative, and it costs not to exceed $42,445.48. And the low bidder is Schrader Asphalt Services. And if there are no questions or concerns, we can entertain a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second, Morgan Adams.
And we have a third, I presume?
Need a roll call.
Right.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion is approved, 3-0. And Joe, one is left, item C, is there?
Yes, sir. Item C, the final item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with SafeBuild Illinois, providing plumbing inspection and plan review services on a, on a per-fee basis. If there are no questions.
An hourly, per-fee?
Yes, on a fee basis. If we would like to go into detail from the consent item, Mr. Peterson can, can read the memo.
I think we're good, unless someone else wants to do it.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, Alderman Dash?
One more.
We have a, we have a motion and a second.
We didn't take the vote yet. Quit, yeah.
Need a roll call.
Alderman, Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes, moving on to new business.
Yes, sir. Item 11A is an ordinance granting a side yard setback variation for the property of 303 West Willow Road, and Mr. Peterson can provide this. We also have the petitioner in, in the council chambers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This case was heard at the Plant, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals last month. It received a recommendation for approval for a first reading. The applicant, Mr. Florentine Montano, is here, should you have any questions. It is the minimum variation necessary to add a, another second car garage to the house. It was determined that should he want to put a driveway in to reach the backyard for detached garage, he'd actually need a variation to encroach closer to the side yard. Thus, a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you.
All right, this is for the, so we don't need an approval, we have a discussion, however. Anyone want to speak? If not, Joe or Dan, why can't we make this final reading?
For a waiver first reading, you need a vote of four of the Alderman. My understanding, the, the writing of the ordinance requires four out of the five. I don't know how we would make the, we wouldn't make the percentage to waive the waiver first reading with the short attendance at the council tonight, sir.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I sit on the council also. Is that only for a tie?
I'd have to defer that to Attorney O'Driscoll, but he's nodding his head, that's correct,
All right, but if there's only two Alderman's present at a council, I am on the board also. I could vote then. Why can't I vote now?
Because I believe the way the ordinance reads...
Dan, Dan, let the attorney answer the question.
Yes, sir. I think we would need the other council members present.
You think?
That's the way the ordinance, the code reads, yes.
How is this? All right, moving on to item B, first reading.
Thank you, sir. Item B is also, as you mentioned, also a first reading. It's an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a sit-down restaurant at 1311 North Rand Road. Mr. Peterson can present this, and the petitioners are also in the council chambers tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This case is for the vacant retail spot at 1311 North Rand Road. It was the former cabinet shop. The applicants are seeking approval for a sit-down restaurant and a space that's approximately 30, or 3,045 square feet. After two public hearings, continuation of a revised floor plan was presented, which was in the packet, and the city, and the zoning board of appeals did recommend approval on the, that the site could handle the spacing needs for a full-service sit-down restaurant, and had adequate parking. So... So the recommendation was to approve a sit-down restaurant for the location. Ms. Susan Dorsh, one of the applicants, is here tonight should you have any questions.
The end of question three is to you. We have a stringent requirement to allow a restaurant that is a true restaurant, stove, thirty seats, everything else. Because the stated effect was that the people want to open up video gaming. Am I right so far?
Yes. And what had happened is that the plant commission or zoning board of appeals asked the applicants to come back with a revised floor plan. They asked with a better menu, a kitchen layout that showed the... that they had the capacity to operate a restaurant, sit-down restaurant, because the PZBA does not have purview over the issuance of the liquor license nor the state issuance of a future gaming license. Yes, the applicant has stated that they eventually would like to get the gaming license, but they did testify to the fact that they would open as a restaurant, sit-down restaurant. And Ms. Dorsh is here. Should you have any questions to that regard?
Well, again, the questions are simple. Do they have a stove? Do they have a hood? Do they have thirty seats? All the basics, I'm sure the PZBA asked all those questions.
They have more than adequate room for, and capacity for thirty... the thirty seating. They have refrigeration and their revised menu shows for sub sandwiches, pizza, pizza making, hot dogs, and such, which is similar to other restaurants that we have in town. Additionally, our code does not require a flat top griddle or a fryer to be a restaurant. And if you don't have those devices, you don't need a hood. We have a number of those locations here in town right now. The plant commission did ask questions to that regard, and the answers were affirmative. So they did a recommendation, six to oh, to recommend approval.
Alderman Quinn?
I have several questions. This is not a restaurant. A restaurant serves food. This is the kind of food you get at Seven-Eleven, which that's where it belongs. So this is not a restaurant. I don't notice in your report that you put that there was a sushi place next door, but that doesn't compensate for this organization actually being a restaurant. So, and I would like the owners to clarify. When you say they're gonna be making pizza, this little menu that's here looks like these are frozen pizzas they'll put into a microwave or something. Sub sandwiches. This is not a sit-down restaurant that would enhance our community. This is our food that's worth, will allow them to have a gambling place. And frankly, I don't know that we need another place with gambling machines in the community. So maybe we're remiss in, you know, quantifying what a restaurant is because thirty people are not gonna go in and eat sub sandwiches all day long when there's a Subway restaurant already, you know, near there. So how is this enhancing our community? I don't understand it. It's not a restaurant.
Well, I mean, I grew up making sub sandwiches.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who you are and why, and to answer the question, please, Sue.
Good evening. My name is Susan Dorsh. And I grew up, my family had a sub shop. And, I mean, they were busy all the time. It's very popular. They're all over. People have sit-down restaurants with sub sandwiches everywhere. And that's what we wanted to have.
So, and let me just ask you, Sue. What is your... So your background in being a restaurateur is having owned a sub shop. How are you guys gonna be funded to have a gaming cafe?
I'm sorry.
That looks like what the intention is from the information that council was given.
They haven't applied for gaming, so I don't know that it's... I think it's premature. Still with that issue.
Well, I'd like to know what her background is in gaming because the companies that have come into the council before are corporations with a lot of money behind them. So this is not a real restaurant. It's Seven-Eleven food. It's food that you can get at Thorntons across the street. Menu is not a restaurant menu. This is a minimal menu so that they can open the doors and be a gaming cafe. What the LLC looks like.
So Susan, I don't think you heard. Her question is, what is your background in the food? And then what is your background in the gaming? Did I state that correctly, Alderman Quinn?
You did, Dan. Thank you.
Okay. My parents had a sub shop for about fifty-five years. So I grew up with that. And as far as the gaming, I've been working in the gaming restaurants for seventy years now. And that's my background. That's what I...
Did you hear that, Alderman Quinn?
Any...
I did.
Okay.
Any further questions? Because this is not a vote tonight. This is simply a presentation of an idea that was approved by the PZBA. The vote will come at the next city council meeting. Anyone else would like to ask any questions? Please make yourself known.
Morgan Adams, I just have a couple of questions. So you have... What kind of device? What kind of appliances do you have for cooking food?
We will have the convection ovens. We will have the large refrigeration unit for all of the sandwich stuff, salads. We will have a pizza maker for the pizzas. Excuse me. And I'm trying to think of what else we had. And yeah, I think that's about it. I'm not sure.
All right. Let me interrupt for a moment. You're going to have pizzas. You're going to have sub sandwiches. You're not going to have dinners, steak dinners or any kind of other dinners, which typically a restaurant would have. Is that correct?
Yes.
She said yes.
I'm sorry.
All right. Alderman Morgan Adams, do you have anything more?
Have you made an application for video gaming with the state yet?
Pardon me?
Have you made any application for video gaming to the state?
Oh, no.
Are you planning on making one within the next six months?
Possibly.
Well, let's clear the air a little bit. They need a liquor license before they can go get a gaming license.
That's true. That's true.
In any case.
You haven't applied for a liquor license yet, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
You did. You have applied for a liquor license. Okay. So can you tell... I think the question that Alderman Quinn had asked, I just wanna... I wanna ask the same question and maybe in a different way. Can you tell us how your establishment will be different, if at all, from the other establishments that are in the same street, same on Rand Road or in the same area that are just doing video gaming?
I mean, we're gonna have a sit-down restaurant. We're gonna have all the subs and everything. We're gonna have food in there. And the gaming would be in the rear of it. Drinks. I mean, I don't know.
So there's nothing that you can think of right now that would distinguish this from the other video gaming facilities that are currently in Prospect Heights? Is that correct?
Well, yeah. I mean, the sub sandwiches. I wanna do the ones like my parents had made.
Okay.
And that's...
Would that be different than the other places? The other places have?
Yes.
Sub sandwiches, the way you're gonna do sub sandwiches?
No, they do not.
Okay, so that would be a distinction?
Absolutely.
That's what we're all asking. We're asking what distinguishes you from the other video gaming places that are also...
Oh, I won't be taking like a family recipe that they had had for close to sixty years. And that's what I wanna bring and sell in the restaurant.
Okay. And that's going to be distinction, a distinctive thing? Because the other video gaming places don't have that, right?
Right, right.
Okay. So that's her answer. That's how she distinguishes her place from the other video gambling establishments in the area. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do, by the way. How many people will be working in your restaurant?
Hopefully, they will. Maybe nine people, something like that. Eight, nine people.
And that'll be on shifts, I presume?
Pardon me?
On shifts.
Yes, yes.
So the question is, will they all be at the same time?
No.
All right. Any more questions? We'd like to move on.
I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Would... Is it possible that this is a fast food place? You mentioned it's restaurant style, but what would it more closely resemble?
I couldn't hear.
She asked, what type of a restaurant would it most closely resemble?
I just keep picturing my parents' place. I mean, they had a building, they had booths and stuff. And people came in, they sat down, they had their subs. They had, you know, and they just, they sat and ate.
My concern is, is it fast food or ordering from a menu and sitting down and being waited on?
Oh, yeah. No, they would be waited on. Yes, absolutely. And there'd be a menu.
Okay.
All right. If that's it, can we move on?
Thank you. Item C is related to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Item C is related to the last presentation. This is a letter of request and ordinance to increase the number of Class C3 liquor licenses, beer and wine only, with reduced hours from four to five at the request of Sues. And I stress, this is also a first reading. It's related to their petition.
Well, you know, a liquor license takes in some problem. You have to go through a credit check and personal background check, for example. And that's yet to come. I don't think we can really discuss that today.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
This is reduced hours from four to five. Is that from four to five? I don't understand what this is saying.
No, that's the number of licenses from four to five. An increase of the number of...
So we want to increase?
Class C.
Okay, got it. We're increasing.
Correct. And as the mayor said, that's only part of the step. The first step is if the council agrees to increase the number of licenses, the applicant has to go through a very thorough process. The police, the Prospect Heights Police Department. Fingerprinting. Fingerprinting goes to the Illinois Department of State Police. There's a very thorough background check. All licensed applicants go through that. Liquor licensed applicants.
Right. Thank you.
All right, Joe. I think we can move on.
Thank you. Which brings us to item 12. It's a workshop session, and we have a request by City Treasurer Tibbetts for examination of Lake Michigan water service for the city.
Thank you, Joe. Given the fact that we're missing two Aldermen tonight, I'm gonna make an abbreviated summary of my purpose tonight. It's been a while since the city council considered our water infrastructure. And I'm sure most of our Aldermen have not been exposed to many of the issues. I did send by email some copies of the City Journal from late eighties, early nineties so that you get an idea that this is not new for the city to consider. So sending me... Let me hit on some of the top level points to consider. In the next city newsletter, I mentioned the topic. And here's what I wrote. I would like the city council to consider spending the time and effort looking into developing a plan and potential funding assistance for extending a city water system throughout the city. This project is long, long overdue, considering it has been mostly talked about for forty-five years. Along with that, there should be a plan to buy out Illinois American Water and operate that system as a municipal system. By gaining control of that water system, we would inherit our water supply directly from Glenview and thereby reduce the water rates for all of our residents and businesses. So at the top level, I suggest a two-track approach. One track is to develop a plan to extend the existing city water system throughout the western portion of Prospect Heights. The other track is to get control of our source of water by acquiring the Illinois American Water and Sewer operating in the eastern portion of Prospect Heights and a small part of Mount Prospect. Illinois American supplies wholesale water to the Prospect Heights pump house on Camp McDonald Road for Rob Roy and other city retail customers. There are two more, two main reasons for accomplishing both of these goals. One is better fire protection, and the other is to save money. I have a video that addresses fire protection in an interview with Don Gould. Patrick?
Uh, wait. Would you...
Hi. Rich Tibbetts here with Fire Chief Don Gould. Chief, I appreciate you taking the time to talk to us today as you approach your retirement. And, you know, you and I have spoken about a number of things over the years that have to do with the fire district. And we just wanted to document it a little bit just to get your impressions as you get ready to leave your full-time employment here and go off and have a good time for the rest of your life, hopefully. I wanted to read a question to you because it's something that we get often in the community, and I wanna make sure I get it right.
Okay.
I wanted to get your insight into a few issues on firefighting that are raised from time to time. And one topic has to do with the value of fire hydrants and their value in fighting fires. Some people feel that they don't necessarily help in controlling or putting out a fire, but they are rather a cost-saving tool for manpower and equipment. Are they a firefighting tool or just a cost-saving convenience?
Well, it's interesting you ask that question because for centuries, forever, water has been the main thing that we use to put out fires. It's the most economical thing, and it's the most plentiful. It is the most important thing for us to use. As far as saving manpower, our cost of manpower, we run at pretty much minimums usually for manpower. We also run an ambulance service here. So we depend on our manpower to do both. And what ends up happening in our areas of Prospect Heights where we have no fire hydrants, which is about forty-five to fifty percent of our community are on private wells, we end up having to take the personnel off of our ambulance and having them get on the tanker truck and bring that out with three thousand gallons of water. The cost savings for us, we wouldn't be able to drop manpower because we need about seventeen men to operate a fire, if we have an actual fire. So we run nine guys a day, and we rely on mutual aid to provide the rest of it when we upgrade to a fire. By having a fire hydrant in front of the building, number one, we don't have to rely on shuttling, vehicles shuttling water for us. One of the problems with shuttling water is there's a lot of variables that can go wrong. One is, first of all, you have to have staff in to manage that equipment. Number two, your response time to bring water to the scene all depends on weather, traffic, even the veh...
um, even the vehicle. We've had incidents where we were going on emergencies, and yes, we get flat tires. So, I mean, those are things that you have to, you have to think about. The other thing that's real important is when we pull up and we spot a fire hydrant in front of a building or close to a building, we can eliminate that need to use manpower and equipment to lay large diameter hose up to a mile away, or shuttle water. We can use those people to actually extinguish a fire, do rescue, ventilation, all the things that we need to do on the fire scene, instead of splitting our crews and have to worry about water supply. The other issue is, by tankering water, we have to be very careful on our times, how much, you know, how much time we have while we're using water. Um, we get, we get guys inside a fire, we have to know that we have enough water to get them back out. If, if they're into an rescue, or they're fighting a fire, the clock is ticking, and we have to know that if we don't put out this fire, we have to have enough water to get those guys back out safely. So, once you get a fire hydrant, you have a positive water supply, we can eliminate that whole section. So, I guess to answer your question the short way is that, you know, it's not a cost savings for us. Um, and fire hydrants, basically, you know, they're, they're, they're not only just for fighting fires. Public work uses them to maintain their system. They flush their system, they maintain their system. But fire hydrants are very important for the Fire Department. There's not a chief alive I know that would say, "No, I don't like fire hydrants every 300 feet."
Right.
So, I hope that answers your question.
It is, and then, and one of the observations I've had for a long time is, as you drive around the United States, or even anywhere in the world for that matter, you, you notice fire hydrants if you look for them, in almost every small community, or large, and sometimes in very odd places. Um, I, I took a photograph of a fire hydrant at the top of the Grand Canyon.
It's actually a 20-minute video that goes into other points about the benefits of city water. Um, and also, I'd like to point out that October is Fire Safety Month. So anyway, uh, the other reasons for a city water system are domestic potable water and economic development. There's roughly 2,500 wells in Prospect Heights, and I like to say 2,500 stories about them. Each homeowner has various conditions of well water and various means of treating it for consumption. Most of the debate about extending a city water system has revolved around cost. We've had water committees, debates, and referendums on the matter, and for the most part, homeowners feel they can deal with their well water without paying for a municipal water supply. And yet, that's not the whole reason for needing that infrastructure. There needs to be a means of balance and compromise to offset homeowners being burdened with the entire cost. And there are several things that can be done. I'm not going to go into all that tonight, but I will point out that Prospect Heights is unique by having passed an ordinance that allows homeowners to keep their wells, even if they connect to city water. That was the main result of the water committee I chaired for several years. The third reason for city water is economic development. When a business looks at various locations to set up shop or build a building, access to water is a big consideration. A fire suppression system is a lot more cost-effective with the availability of city water. Also, some businesses rely on clean water to operate. Having to treat well water for that purpose adds to the cost of their operation. Do you know that after our City Hall fire, Mount Prospect allowed the installation of a water line for our rebuilt building? Yes. And that was the second time they allowed that to happen. The first time was in the late 1990s, when City Hall was located where Walgreens is right now, along with the Fire District and the police station. But when City Hall moved across the street, Walgreens inherited city water, whereas the Shell Station and the commercial buildings just south of our current City Hall were not allowed to hook up, even though the water line runs right past their buildings. And so it goes. There's a lot more to this topic, which is why I emailed a copy of the white paper to you. I'm not sure if you've ever seen this document, but it's still the most comprehensive document on city water done 20 years ago, and it needs to be updated. But I think if this goal is ever going to succeed, we need a unified effort on the part of the city council to find the best solution and someone to coordinate the various parts of this puzzle. I hope you agree. And now, do you have any comments or questions?
So, I have a question. Um, we had a presentation from Illinois American, I believe, a couple of years ago. Uh, they had made an offer to purchase the sewer and water systems for our city to, to actually provide it. Um, and they were, but they were high on their prices. So can, can you tell me how you, what, do you have anything specific that you can think of as to how we would buy Illinois American in terms of dealing with the issue of, 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 of providing water for all of our wards, and how we would keep the cost down? Or no?
So, I, I'm trying to follow, is that, that you want to know how Illinois American would help us keep our costs down?
No, I mean, you're, you're saying that you would, we would buy out Illinois American, correct?
Yeah.
So if we buy out Illinois American, how are we going to keep our costs down?
Okay. Well, one of the things that Illinois, I've asked Illinois American directly if they, what they would like to, like for their water system. And they continually say that we're not for sale. Well, that, that may be true, but the fact is, is that, operating a municipal system, we don't have to pay taxes, and we don't have to pay profits. So, in my opinion, automatically, we can operate a water system for less money than what Illinois American needs to charge to produce those, the revenue to pay taxes and to make profits. So, and it's obvious that they don't want to sell. I mean, if they want, if they were losing money, they'd, they'd want to sell in a heartbeat, I would think. So they're obviously making money.
So how, how are we going to maintain the infrastructure to provide water?
How are we?
How are we doing it on our own?
How are we going to maintain the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Well, we do it now for our own city, city water system.
Well, we do it for the sewer.
Oh, no. Mm-mm. We have a city water system. It's, it's a pump house on Camp McDonald Road.
Right, you're talking about for the different wards that have city water, but they're still running through Illinois American, aren't they?
Well, Illinois American supplies us with the wholesale water-
Right.
-from Glenview. They, they buy it from Glenview.
Right.
And, and Glenview, I mean, obviously, and then they resell it to us. They're, they're marking it up and then selling it to us.
Right.
They're the only customer that Glenview has. And if we bought out Illinois American, we would be able to be in line with Glenview, so we would buy it directly from them.
So how do we buy out Illinois American? You said they're not interested in-
That's the question.
Right.
Um, and I, my opinion about that is that there needs to be some sort of legislation at the state level to make it, uh, attractive for them to sell, one way or the other. I mean, if it's a direct form of legislation that says, if a municipality is, uh, you know, there's, there's plenty of other municipalities in Illinois that are in the same shape we are, uh, that they have a private utility that's supplying them with something as important as water and sewer, and they can't get rid of them. They, they just can't. They're not for sale. Uh, the state needs to say, "Look, if the municipality wants to buy them out, they should be allowed to do that at a fair price." And I'm not trying to hurt them, I'm just trying to eliminate the cost of what, the burden that our, our citizens are paying to a private utility like that. That's it.
So until we can buy out Illinois American, what, how, how would we be able to provide water? How will we be able, how would we be able to do this? If we can't buy Illinois American out?
Well, we just have to figure out a way to do it. It's not an easy one, but it's something that we need to work on. And, I mean, I'm, it's, everything is doable, in my opinion, everything.
Well, you don't have a specific proposal as to how we would do it yet?
I'm, I'm just presenting this to the city council to see if they want to get their feet wet in something that's going to be a tough job.
I mean, this is, this is going to be very costly. How, how can the city afford to deal with this?
I, I didn't hear that.
How, how can the city afford to deal with this? We don't have the money to do that. We'd have to-
Well, we, uh, well, I, I think that, um, I'm not sure what the legal requirements are going to be, and I don't, I haven't figured out the financial plan, because I don't really want to spend a, you know, a lot of hours out of my life to have it not move forward. I need the council to say, "Yes, we want to move forward with this. We want to try to do this."
Right, but the council can't move forward until they know specifically what can be done and how it can be done and the cost.
Well, they, well, they can certainly support it. They can support, well, it's going to take a lot of work on the part of, of somebody. Uh, perhaps the city engineer is going to get involved, uh, perhaps, um, you know, there needs to be another water committee. I don't know. I mean, the white paper needs to be updated. There's a bunch of steps that need to take place in order to make a plan like this start to move. And so, a lot of research, a lot of discussion with our, uh, local officials, I mean, the state officials, perhaps federal officials. Um, you know, I've had some preliminary conversations with those people. One of our state officials didn't even know that Prospect Heights was living, uh, that the single-family areas were on well. He didn't know that. So, there's a lot of education, a lot of communication that needs to take place.
All right, let me break in there, uh, if I could. The, uh, the issue, uh, is well thought out, and that is the cost, and where we would get the money, and so on and so forth. I've had Illinois American Water this past year in my office three times. Nice people, and, uh, they would love to buy us out. No question about it. Uh, and Rich has your points about that, where they could make more money than they're making now. However, how do you do it? We've had referendums, the people turned us down, Rich, what, two, three times, uh, and refused the referendum. We had a water committee that even I served on early on, and, uh, saw that this is going to be a monumental task. The first thing I would like to do, or will do, is talk to our engineers. They did the plan years ago, and the cost to do the job, as you recall, Rich, I'm sure, was well over $40 million. Uh, when I talked, and I've told the story, and it's a true one, when I talked to Senator Durbin, he said, "Don't bother me, that's too small of a number for me to get involved." I talked to our, uh, present government representatives, and they don't know much about it. I asked about, uh, creating SSAs, and nobody answered that question. So, this is going to take a lot of investigation before we can even go to a referendum. And, uh, the alderman is right. Where do we get the money? Uh, you want grants? I've been able to, and so has Joe. Yeah, we've gotten a lot of grants, but never too, uh, close to the number that it's going to take to get this done. So, uh, I suggest that we first talk to our own engineers who did the study of the $40 million program, and, uh, without cost, to tell us what their anticipated new cost would be after many years of, uh, growing the, the dollar number, and see what that's all about. We have no idea what it would cost right now. We'd like to know, and we should know. So I'd like to leave this alone. I'd like to appoint the commissioner, uh, commissioner for this particular project, uh, to, uh, uh, our treasurer, uh, Tibbetts. He's headed it before. There's no other natural person that could walk in and do the job that he's been able to try to do. I want him back. I want a volunteer for that position. And then, start, uh, looking into costs. Start looking into abilities. You think that for a moment, American, uh, Illinois, uh, American Water will come in and say, "Oh, yeah, we'll sell you our company"? That will never happen, the way it's, when they go before the commission just to get an increase in rates. Rich, you remember, and I'm sure, uh, they get their raises automatically. They don't even have to talk to us to raise their rates. So, this is not, uh, you know, let's go, let's go to the party and, uh, get this done. Uh, it's now been 20 years, as you point out, and we were not successful, and, uh, I'm not sure that we'll ever be successful. The major problem, as you well know, is the addition of taxes to the people that now pay too many taxes, in their opinion, in the first place. So they'd rather go to Mr. Henkley and Mr. Schmidt and get their drinking water there and improve their, uh, water systems that they have, uh, cleaning up water, uh, for at least cooking and, uh, and showering and so on. I'm not sure that we'll ever get the water. It's because of the cost, not because of the desire. You and I will meet this week. I'll call Illinois American back in, and, uh, I think we'll see readily that these people will not sell us anything, uh, to diminish their holdings that they already have. That's my opinion, it's a personal opinion, but it's based on history and it's based on knowledge. So if we could do that, then let's, uh, move on to the next part of our presentation tonight. I hadn't expected a long presentation for the first go-round, but you did a good job, Rich, uh, supplying some good information, and we can pick that up and go from there.
Yeah, Rich, this is Alderman Dash. Thank you for presenting this evening.
Yes, thank you, Rich.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Alderman Morgan Adams, I want to stay the same. Rich, you did a great job in your presentation.
Okay, Joe.
Uh, item 13 is the approval of warrants. Madam Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Joe, and I also, excuse me, wanted to thank Rich. Uh, I did want to just squeeze in and say that, um, this is a good time that he brought it up, because if all else fails, we should at least be ready, just like the mayor said, let's get those new numbers, and, uh, be ready for any infrastructure talk, because that is something that's huge up on the Hill. And maybe we can get legislative help with that. But we need to have some numbers, new numbers. Thank you, it was great, Rich. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all right, approval of warrants. We have a total for the expenditures for, of $284,422.29. We have wire payments on September 21st, 24th, excuse me, 2021, in the amount of $179,418.16. Bringing this warrant to $463,840.45 for council's approval tonight.
Motion to approve the warrants as presented.
So moved. Alderman Adams?
We have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
We have a second. We have a discussion. Anyone? There being none, let's have a, a roll call.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Motion passes. Moving on, we have Joe, item 14, I believe, uh, public comments on non-agenda matters.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, is anyone registered?
Well, we'll wait if anyone wants to break into it now. There being none, uh, we have no executive session, uh, no action as a result of executive session. We need a motion to adjourn, my favorite motion. Alderman Quinn? We have a second?
Second. Morgan Adams?
We have a second. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, or at least say nay? Have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you.